Moment of silence for the, we lost one of our students. Name by the name of Max, who was murdered, very sad. So I asked Commissioner White to lead us in a moment of silence and then the pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have the agenda and we will follow that and we will start first with the acceptance of minutes. All these minutes were sent out earlier through board docs. The July 26 Rochester Prep and the July 26 business meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye. The ayes have it. Thank you. We're going to do a quick presentation for the Rochester City School District Back to School Campaign. The board has started what we call a little board scholarship fund where board members can donate money for, you know, sometimes miscellaneous things that come up for students. A student may need book bags and may need money for tuition and that type of thing. And the board is gonna, we're gonna make a contribution to the back to school bookbag campaign, but first I want to call up Nidia Padilla to give a brief thank you on that. And then the goal fell a little short, so the board members out of their own personal funds, it's not district funds, have agreed to make up the portion of $790. So I want to present, board members if we can come down and present this check to Ms. Padilla.
Thank you Commissioner Evans and Commissioner Cruz for your support with the Rochester City School District Back to School Rally. Our goal was to raise 2,000. We were short, but now we exceeded effective today. We raised $2,500 and of course with your contribution of 790. We will be able to distribute over 1,000 backpacks and supplies this Saturday. So if you'd like to come and join us from 12 noon to 4 p.m. in collaboration with WDKX, Rock Reed and many community organizations that they'll have informational displays for parents and students. Well, they'll have to attend every single display before they receive their backpack except for the Rock Reed individuals who actually read their book and submitted their essays. So if you want to join us, I'll leave this information with Shanae. I'd also like to thank our team for their support because I couldn't do this alone. And if you're here, can you please stand up? Cecilia DeFranco, Andrea Polansky, Patty Kaiser, Cheryl Sarkis, John Burke, Ernie Provone and all the donors that are here. And I know that we have Bill Carpenter, our CEO, and Chris Doran from RTS. Can you please stand up because they are our pencil partner and they also assisted with this campaign. So, thank you and I hope that you can join us Saturday to help distribute the backpacks and supplies. Thank you very much.
Now, we don't have a lot of money in that fund. That's what everyone to know. There's limited resources, but if you know of young people that might be short on books for college or anything like that, you can let our clerk know and we can see what we can do on behalf of board members to help out in that instance. We have several speakers addressing an agenda item. I think the bulk of the speakers are addressing Commissioner Adams' resolution as it relates to the standardized testing. But we also have some speakers non-addressing agenda items. I'm also going to call those speakers up so they don't have to wait around all night for the meeting. So I'm going to start with list number one and list number one is, the first person is Ms. Laylaw, Elizabeth Laylaw. Is Elizabeth here? And after Elizabeth Laylaw, we'll have Santoshia Cackindell, Ricardo Adams and then Howard Eagle.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We hear you.
I've been out of the classroom a couple of months, so I don't have my teacher voice on right now. I wanted to thank each of you for the hours and hours you spend devoting to the children of Rochester. It means, I know what it means to take that away from your families. So I'm just really, really grateful for the time that you spend devoted to our children. I'm here to support the pending resolution for discussion regarding high stakes testing. My name's Elizabeth Laylaw. I've been teaching for 25 years, most recently the last 17 at MCC. I am the outgoing chair of the Collegewide Committee on Assessing Student Learning. I've also been working with a subgroup of the Community Education Task Force to research standardized testing. And I have communicated to each one of you perhaps with the exception of the superintendent in the last year with what our research found about standardized testing. I also helped begin the PTO at school five and I helped lead the PTSA at school 50. I served on the school-based planning teams at each of those schools. And I usually, I don't usually say this much about me, but it's relevant for our purposes here. So I've spent all this time trying to figure out how to improve the educational experience for the children in the city school district. What I know is that we have solid evidence that after 10 years, 10 years of high stakes testing, we have not improved student performance. So it's, it's my, the educator in me understands this is because learning happens inside a student's head. And the most you do to intervene between the relationship between that student and the teacher, that is to the detriment of the student's learning. Standardized testing just corrupts the whole circle of learning between a student and his teacher. There's an easy fix I found. My daughter Jolanda's here. She'd like to speak as well. She's a ninth grader at SOTA and she spent the last year opting out of standardized tests. Namely those tests for whom the results weren't promptly reported to her teachers. So that was our test. We asked, this required us having a greater relationship with our teachers to figure out which tests were the ones to opt out of. So she can say a few words.
Okay, can you hear me?
We hear you.
The reason why I opted out of the test is because I think the state test gives unnecessary stress and pressure on the students that are goes to school. What I really want for the student is to go to the school so they could learn. And the state test, my thinking is that the state test takes times away from the classes and lesson we need. If we combined up all the state test's time and how many hours it takes up in our classes, we could see excessive of time taken from our lesson. What I prefer is that we don't have state tests and we have tests that our teacher designed for us in class. So there could be another way of improving and progressing on the students. What I really want is that, that everyone in the school is to be able to learn, take their time in class and not feel pressure from the state test. Be hurried to rush with learning because if we rush to learn, then we won't be able to memorize all the lesson, all the topic as well. I know there is many, many topics, but I think the more time we have, the better we do in school.
She'll go on and on and on. She dragged me here.
What school, what school were you at?
I go to the school of the arts.
School, yes, thank you.
She's a ninth grader, honor students there and you know, she is your success story. It's because of the relationship she's had with many, many RSD teachers over the course of the year that she's so well spoken today. So I really urge you to seriously consider the motion about high stakes testing. And that it be a place where we can begin to talk about it and maybe that conversation might best start with teachers, asking teachers what they take to be the educational value of high stakes testing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Cackindell. We can't figure out how to stop the beep. We can't figure out how to stop the beeping, so bear with us for one second.
You don't want me to talk over the beeping?
No, no.
Just pronounce your last.
I could say my last name, Cackindell.
All right, we figured it, did it stop? All right, we figured it out.
Okay. Have you started the stopwatch again? I may be the only person who addresses you this evening as a fan of standardized testing. Standardized tests have huge potential if we are trying to find out how many students know their multiplication tests, tables for instance. What else can they be used for though? Can they be used to figure out whether a student who fails a test is dealing with a personal tragedy or a terrible teacher? Can they be used to make incarcerated fathers read to their children every night before bed? Can they be used to force great teachers to work in high poverty schools? The current testing regime requires all of us to behave as if this is possible. We know that it isn't, but we play along because we can't afford to give up the money we get. I'm not out of time. I know I'm not.
We'll figure it out.
We can't afford to give up the money we get, we get for playing this game of make believe. Quick pop quiz and an easy one. The answer was published in the newspaper, okay? So a hair and a pineapple have a race. Some animals bet on the pineapple, but it loses. When the race is over, the animals eat the talking pineapple. Is it because they're hungry, excited, annoyed or amused? Would you eat creatures that can talk to you for the sake of excitement, amusement, to punish them for losing a race or because hunger necessitated it? The most charitable interpretation of this incident is probably that since we tried to do so many other unrealistic things with standardized tests, someone decided that we might as well use them to screen for sociopaths. The fact that students were supposed to select an answer that required them to see sociopathic tendencies in the animals shouldn't surprise us. After all, decisions that seem to be made by someone channeling Joseph Stalin abound these days. Here are some of the other things the current testing regime asks us to do. It asks us to disperse the hardest to serve students such as ELL students to schools where their needs may not be met. Not because this will be better for them, but because it will create a more even distribution of failing scores. Let me repeat that. The prerogative, the prerogatives of data dictate that children will be assigned to schools based not on their needs, but based on data's needs. Keeping students who were born in refugee camps and haven't yet learned to speak English out of school 15 is an attractive proposition. It's won the PTO battles every year. This proposition is attractive not because it would be better for the high need students, the ELL students who were born in refugee camps. And not because it would even be more cost effective for a district that has trouble finding money for music classes. In fact, it would be less cost efficient. The district would lose money and the children would lose access to a school where they enjoy acceptance and an enthusiastic staff with vast cultural and ELL expertise. It is an attractive proposition though, because while it will hurt children, it will help data. This is a system that values miniscule inanimate marks on a piece of paper more than it values the education of young people. I ask you, who should be taking a standardized test that screens for sociopathy? Please support Commissioner Adams' resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ricardo Adams and Mr. Ricardo Adams will be followed by Howard Eagle and then Jack Linger.
Hello, my name is Ricardo Adams. I'm here in support of this resolution. I got two kids to go to Walter Cooper Academy. It's an ELL school which is modeled after World of Inquiry. I see a real risk that expeditions will be cut back as teachers are forced to spend more time teaching the state tests. In recent years, the role of testing has gotten out of hand and there's, I'm concerned that my kids, teachers would be forced to teach in a way different than they've been teaching. It won't be in the best interest of my kids or their self. Already there's too much focus on test preparations for English and math. After volunteering every day the past school year at number 10 school, putting skin in the game, I, all I can say is I got nothing but respect and admiration for the teachers, man, because they didn't just teach my kids, they taught me. And I seen what they was doing. They ain't just teaching, they're counseling and everything up in there. They need more flexibility and more support, not less. And I think this testing is gonna not allow them to have any flexibility. Nate, I'm telling you, I've been there and I'm gonna be there again. Let's support the teachers, man, so they can support our kids, man.
Thanks Ricardo. Mr. Howard Eagle.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, I wanted to mention because you didn't make any mention of it to people that the reason I'm speaking out of order is because they listed me incorrectly. I am a community member, but I'm a parent first and foremost, and so that's why the order was changed. I want to thank you for this wonderful two to three minute monthly opportunity to have public input into the business of the Rochester Board of Education. I'm here this evening along with other members of the Community Education Task Force to talk at Mary Adams. Because it's impossible to talk with a person when she's clearly so doggone arrogant and condescending and irresponsible and unprofessional and discriminatory and maternalistic, if that's a word, that she won't even listen. It's impossible to talk with such a person when she believes that in her role as an elected public official, she can pick and choose which parents, which educators, which taxpayers she will and won't respond to and then still have the audacity, the unmitigated gall to call herself some kind of a leader. But then we really want to hopefully talk with and not at all of you regarding the golden concept called accountability. Something we hear a lot about in this town and in this school district, but we all know the truth. And the truth is, the truth of the matter is that often in this school district, no one is really accountable to anyone for anything. Yet every time we turn around, we're hearing accountability this, accountability that. So, well, we want you to pay very close attention because we're going to demonstrate concretely what it looks like to hold someone accountable. Not necessarily for what we want them to do, but for what they declared repeatedly they are committed to doing. Now in terms of accountability, it doesn't mean that you're off the hook. We're gonna try this again. We're gonna send out an invitation this time and we're going to send it to all of you, to all of the board members and invite you to a community meeting to have a conversation with parents, with grandparents, with guardians, with educators, with students, with other taxpayers. And we want to have a conversation about the direction of this district. The reason we sent the invitation initially to Commissioner Adams is because she had declared that she has grave concerns about the direction of this district. She made the point that the board and the superintendent, the administration are closing schools and opening schools and reconfiguring schools and that we don't know, those of us, you know, regular parents of community, we don't know what this school district is going to look like in 10 or 15 years from now. And so she has said that the board needs to articulate. And so she has said that the board needs to articulate the vision ten or fifteen years down the road. That made complete sense to us. We supported that, and we assume that she still feels that way. And since she's now been on the board for several months, we also assume that she probably has more insight in terms of understanding that direction and perhaps her own vision about the future direction. That's what our invitation was about. And so this time, we're going to send it to all of you to come and have that conversation with us. And as always, we want to express to this board that we're willing to work cooperatively and collaboratively with you and anyone else in this community who truly has the best interest of our students and our families at heart. So again, thank you for this wonderful two-to-three-minute monthly opportunity to have public input into the business of the Rochester Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Eagle. Mr. Lingard, did I say your last name correctly? And then Mr. Lingard will be followed by Mr. Dan Dermitsch.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Jack Langrack, and I'm a member of the Coalition for Justice in Education. I am here to address the high-stakes testing resolution before the board, and in doing that, I would like to have you join me in taking a walk, to walk a mile in the shoes of our students, to take a look at how the continual bombardment of high-stakes testing has changed schooling and learning for them. As a result of the emphasis on testing, our kids are involved in too much desk time devoted to grim drill-for-skill tactics. It's also called drill-for-kill, because it saps the joy of learning that we are all born with right out of the children. It has eliminated recess in many schools, or recess only as a reward for test score achievement. It has moved portions of kindergarten into pre-K and portions of first grade down to kindergarten. It leaves little or no time for the kind of free play so important to the development of the whole child, particularly in pre-K and kindergarten. Early childhood educators are pressured to rush children toward cognitive masteries they are not yet developmentally ready to achieve. This creates all sorts of negative tensions for students and teachers. It has created highly pressurized, anxiety-filled school environments where kids are not able to explore their own wonderings about what makes the world tick. There is no time. That test is coming up. Plus, under this testing regimen, our kids are learning that mistakes are the worst things they can make. How can that be when we all know that being able to ask a good question rather than getting the right answer is a much more important pathway to deep and rich learning? Instead of high-pressure test prep, let's open up the curriculum to engage our students in inquiry, in project-based learning, in music, theater, visual art, dance, creative writing, film, and video making. These encourage creativity, experimentation, risk-taking, collaboration, self-regulation, higher-order thinking, and the building of self-esteem. They often engage students who are not succeeding in other arenas and help them to experience success and joy in learning. These things are more important than any right answer on a multiple-choice test. Finally, consider the premature seriousness of all this testing for kids who are only eight years old. The idea that third graders, who already own an impressive list of insecurities, should be made to feel like failures. Consider the shameful test prep emphasis instead of student engagement with the wonders of real learning. Consider the one-size-fits-all approach, and consider the diminishment of the joy of schooling for these children. The high-stakes testing resolution before you offers an opportunity to boldly say enough. I strongly urge its adoption. Thank you.
And after Dan will be David Hirsch.
Good evening. My name is Dan Dermitsch. I'm a former teacher and principal in the City School District and currently the chair of the Coalition for Justice in Education. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Mary Adams and the Board of Education Committee responsible for bringing this incredibly important decision reform issue to this public meeting. Crucial, it is crucial, because the use of high-stakes testing has had an incredibly negative impact on student learning. I almost see it, and I think many people do, as almost being like a hidden cancer within education. There are many policy and lawmakers, however, who believe that the use of high-stakes standardized testing is a desirable educational strategy based on the fact that virtually all states, through the coercion of our federal and state governments, require it, unless you happen to be attending a private school. The reality, however, is that based on the research, the decision to support this resolution should be a no-brainer. There is no evidence, no data, nothing, to support the use of high-stakes testing, standardized testing, in a way that it's currently being used in Rochester, New York State, and the rest of the country. It almost reminds me of the research that was presented on smoking and the ills of tobacco, and yet our country ignored it for years and years because of the pressure of big business and the tobacco industry. Here we are again with something that's harming kids, and we continue to use it, one of the reasons being because of the pressure of our corporate testmakers. Are you aware that there are over 100 esteemed professional educational organizations, including the National Academy of Sciences, the American Research Association, the American Psychological Association, and even the College Board, who do not support the use of high-stakes testing to make decisions on promotion or failure of any individual student, but yet we continue to do it? Volumes of research indicate that high-stakes testing significantly detracts from learning and intrinsic motivation, de-emphasizes teacher professionalism by preventing them from making meaningful decisions about individual students' curriculum assessment and standards, prevents teachers and students from focusing on 21st-century learning skills that students need to succeed as citizens, workers, and scholars. There's nothing in the Regents' exams that promotes the skills that kids need, but yet we continue to do it. Prevents schools from engaging significantly in school reform by forcing them into a one-size-fits-all mode of operation when all the research focuses on how students need different, not the same approaches to learning. And it unfairly discriminates against students who learn differently and those who are poor by forcing them into an unfair comparison mode with middle-class students who have far more educational advantages. Finally, I'm sure that there are some of you who may agree that these conclusions are on target but are reluctant to support this resolution because you believe there are no reasonable alternatives. Please be assured that there are alternatives, including one that's a successful model right here in Rochester, the School Without Walls for the New York State Consortium Schools. And right now, at the Board of Regents, there's a proposal on their table to expand the number of consortium schools. So it's there, it's within the bureaucracy, and we can do this if there's an interest in terms of pursuing it. Passing this resolution is the right thing to do. It provides justice rather than unfairness to our students. Please do the right thing, pass the resolution, continue to explore the alternatives to high-stakes testing, and become a real model of authentic, meaningful educational reform for the rest of the country.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dermitsch. So we have a new bell. I didn't even notice that we had it just until now. If you hear a little cellphone sound, that means your time's up. I didn't, I didn't realize that. Dr. David Hirsch. And Dr. Hirsch will be followed by Dr. Hallmark.
I'm here to support the resolution about high-stakes testing, and I'm also a member of the Coalition for Justice in Education, and I support and second the comments that have ever been made by my colleagues. For those of you who don't know me, but I think I know everybody here, I'm a professor of education at the University of Rochester, and I have written dozens of publications on high-stakes testing, including Raising the Stakes: High-Stakes Testing and the Attack on Public Education in New York, which will be forthcoming in the Journal of Education Policy. However, rather than reading from my own work, I'll highlight a few points from Michael Weinberg's article, "Ten Years of Assessing Students with Scientific Exactitude," from the December 18, 2011 issue of the New York Times, that demonstrates how education officials and politicians have repeatedly used test scores to promote their own careers and mislead the public. So a little history. December 20, December 2002, the State's Education Commissioner, Richard Mills, reports, quote, "Students are learning more than ever. Student achievement has improved in relation to the standards of recent years and continues to do so." Spring 2003, teachers from around New York complain that the state's scoring of highly newly-developed high school tests is out of whack, with biology and earth science tests being too easy and the physics test too hard. The State Council's school superintendents finds the physics score is so unreliable, it sends a letter to colleges for the first time in its history urging them to disregard the test result. Dr. Mills does not flinch, calling the test, quote, "statistically sound and in accordance with nationally accepted standards." June 2003, scores on the state algebra test are so poorly calibrated that 70% of seniors fail. After a statewide outcry, officials agreed as to allow the results. October 2003, a special panel appointed to investigate the state math fiasco concludes that the test, quote, "can't accurately predict performance," was, quote, "created on a cheap" and was full of exam questions that were, quote, "poorly worded and confusing." May 2004, for the fourth year in a row, scores have risen on elementary and middle school state reading and math tests. Spring 2005, New York City fourth graders make record gains in the state English test, with 59% scoring as proficient compared with 49% the year before. "Amazing results," says Mary Bloomberg, "that, quote, 'should put a smile on the face of everybody in the city who happily recites the numbers on his way to reelection.'" Fall 2005, the national assessment of educational progress shows a drop in New York City reading scores. On the eighth-grade test, 90% are proficient in 2005 compared to 22% in 2003. Asked to see it, and state officials have hyped the state test results, Merrill Tish Regent says, "They are never, ever, ever exaggerated." June 2009, the national assessment's fourth-grade reading scores have been stagnant for four years, and the eighth-grade scores are the lowest in a decade, but somehow state scores again soared to record levels. In New York City, 81% of students are deemed proficient in math and 68% proficient in English. July 2010, finally someone, Dr. Tisch, now chancellor of the Board of Regents, has the sense to stand up at a news conference and say that the state's scores are so ridiculously inflated that only a fool would take them seriously, thereby unmasking the mayor, the chancellor, and the former state commissioner. State scores are to be scaled down immediately so that the 68% English proficiency rate at the start of the news conference becomes a 42% proficiency rate at the end of the news conference. And some, I conclude, high-stakes tests have done more harm than good. We need to develop an assessment system that uses multiple measures, both quantitative and qualitative. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Hirsch. Dr. Hallmark?
I'm Dr. Hallmark from the Warner School of Education at the University of Rochester. And I'm here tonight to support Commissioner Adams' resolution against high-stakes testing, and I urge you to do the same. How do we best improve education? Not in the way that we've been headed for the last 10 years, when policies like No Child Left Behind, 10 Years of Failed Efforts, are extended by even more of the same, by Race to the Top. It's clear that we are not doing great assessment of our public education policies. At times like these, we must stand up at the local level, at the school district level, and say no to the worst of these policies. Adams' resolution does just that. What do policymakers need to know and understand about assessment? The primary mode of assessment must be the professional judgment of knowledgeable, highly-educated teachers based on day-to-day interactions with each child. Control of teaching and assessment must be in the hands of professionals, who should also work together to ensure high-quality assessment practices. Samples of student work and videos can be collected into portfolios which document a child's progress. Assessment must be collaborative and include the student. Assessment must respect the student's family, culture, and background. It must identify strengths, not just weaknesses. Let me be clear. Communities have a right to know how their schools are doing, but standardized tests are not a good indicator of students' academic growth, let alone social and emotional growth. By narrowing instruction, causing teaching to the test, and increasing tension within schools, high-stakes assessments are not only wasting time and money, they are actually doing harm. Let's agree we need to make changes that will actually improve schools. This resolution is courageous, and I urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hallmark. Don Bartlo. Don Bartlo will be followed by Dr. Bailey.
My name is Donald Bartlo. I live in Rochester. I have two grandchildren in the City School District. I'm a longtime educator, a learner, a teacher, a principal, superintendent of schools, educational consultant, instructional leadership, coach, and author. I am here tonight to lend my full support for the resolution being put forth by Commissioner Mary Adams, calling for the State Education Department and the governor to reexamine the current public school accountability policy and system. The main thrust of the resolution is that there is a tremendous need to develop an accountability system based on multiple forms of assessment, which do not require extensive high-stakes testing. This 2010, quote, by Harvard educator and noted author, Tony Wagner, reinforces why we need to improve the system. Quote, "Except for the increased emphasis on preparing students for standardized tests, the teaching in our schools has hardly changed at all." I would strengthen Commissioner Adams' resolution by adding one thing. School improvement rests on improving daily teaching and learning, balanced with the belief that the school is the appropriate unit of evaluation. That means everyone connected with the school, students, parents, teachers, school leaders, and board members, are responsible for its success. Look out at this group tonight. There are a number of people speaking on this subject, some of which who have never been here before. That means something. They think it's important. Here's my request to the board. Be the leaders you were appointed to be. Get behind this resolution. You'll be proud that you did. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bailey. And Dr. Bailey will be followed by Tim Adams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brian Bailey. I'm an assistant professor of adolescent education at Nazareth College, where I teach pre-service and in-service teachers, both undergraduate and graduate students, and I conduct research in media literacy. I also collaborate with East High students and teachers. We're studying college readiness and what it means to be college-ready. In fact, I've brought a group of East High students to Columbia University to speak on the issue of college readiness and collaborative research. The reason why I'm here tonight is to report that there's ample empirical research that argues against reliance on standardized tests, including prominent scholars such as David Hirsch, Ed D.C., and Rich Ryan, who all work at the University of Rochester. I wish to point out that there is an absence, there's a complete lack of research that supports an approach to reliance on standardized testing. There is no research that standardized testing leads to favorable outcomes There is no research that standardized testing leads to favorable outcomes such as deep critical thinking, creative entrepreneurship, skilled writing, thoughtful citizenship, or happy youth. I would love to ask President Bush, President Obama, Governor Cuomo, what research supports their policies on standardized testing? And I'm pretty sure I would get a blank look. If we want our youth to read, act, think, create, and write like historians, engineers, entrepreneurs, doctors, teachers, technicians, writers, artists, then we must engage them in authentic learning that far exceeds test preparation or narrow curriculum. I was going to read this long quote, and I'm going to stop because everyone's made the point. I was going to cite Diane Ravitch, who, for those of us who know a lot about educational research, she's the person we've been arguing against for a good thirty years. And she came to Rochester a couple of years ago to say, "I was wrong." She was one of the chief architects of No Child Left Behind, the accountability movement, the question of charter schools, the attack on public education, and she's recently come out and said that she was wrong, and that, I will read one part. She said that, in short, "Accountability turned into a nightmare for American schools, producing graduates who are drilled regularly on the basic skills but were often ignorant about almost everything else. Colleges continued to complain about the poor preparation of entering students who not only had meager knowledge of the world but still required remediation in basic skills. This was not my vision of good education." That comes from Diane Ravitch, who was the chief architect. Is that my time? Okay, so I wholeheartedly support Commissioner Adams' resolution, and I encourage you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Tim Adams? Tim Adams will be followed by Mr. Coles.
Good evening. My name is Tim Adams. I am a city resident, an activist here. I know a lot of the people in the room here. Also a member of the Community Education Task Force. I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleague Howard Eagle, and as well as support what is to come from Task Force members Bonnie Canaan and Mark Friedman on the subject of the future overall direction of the Rochester City School District. And since it's been put out there, commissioners who are present, that is, perhaps now is a good time to consider your personal and collective visions for our school community and really begin to engage this community around what it will take to get us there, because we know this isn't something that you guys can do on your own. We in the task force believe that it does take the entire community working together to achieve our goals, and that's crucial. And so we want to know, we want to work on discussing what it's going to take us to get to achieve that vision, but only if that vision is worthwhile and in the best interests of our kids. And that's sort of the point. We want to know so that if we're going to buy into it, and if we're going to support it and work toward it, we need to know what we're working toward. So if a vision exists, then let us know, and if it doesn't, then let's get together and talk about it and create it. Many people in the room here have spoken to the issue of standardized testing tonight, and that's one aspect of building this vision. And generally, I agree with a lot of what's been said. I think that's great. And I would love to see a resolution passed that has specific action items and mechanism by which you can enforce the policy. Similar resolutions have been passed in cities in Texas and in Florida, and unfortunately there isn't a community working together to enforce and make them stick. And so those cities, those students, those families are still negatively impacted by standardized testing, even though these things, we have these symbolic resolutions. So I'd like to encourage everyone in the room, including the board, to get together and make sure that if this resolution passes, that it doesn't stop there. Now, as far as the task force goes, our vision is embodied in eight principles around which we organize, and standardized testing is one of them. If you guys are interested in our take on standardized testing, please visit our website. There was an article in our newsletter, our most recent newsletter, written by Howard Eagle. Now, Howard spoke to the issue of accountability quite a bit and mentioned that tonight is one step in holding commissioners accountable. So we have a petition I'm going to pass to the commissioners present. Hopefully, they can be passed along to those who couldn't make it tonight. And that's around the issue of getting together to discuss what our district will look like in the next five, ten, fifteen years, and how we can get there. Thank you.
Thank you. If you can give those to the clerk. Mr. Coles, after Mr. Coles, we'll have Ms. Canaan and Mr. Friedman, and then after that, our last speaker will be Mark Friedman.
Good evening. My name is Gerald Coles. The correct spelling of my name is G-E-R-A-L-D. I'm here to speak about the effect of, negative effect of standardized testing on learning to read. I'm qualified to talk about that because I was on the Department, in the Department of Psychiatry at Rutgers Medical School, where I directed a program for learners with serious literacy and emotional problems. I've written several books on learning literacy and learning disabilities and numerous professional articles on the same subject. In a nutshell, standardized testing is very damaging to children's learning to read because it assumes erroneously that there is a standardized way of learning to read. I'll say more about that in a moment. I hadn't planned to do this, but I do want to say a brief word about the history of the problem that we're addressing tonight. Fortunately, that wasn't stopped about twelve, thirteen years ago. It began in Texas under then-Governor George Bush, who was very close with the McGraw family of McGraw-Hill, publisher and test producer. Bush created a belief that there were standardized ways of teaching and learning that could be measured by standardized tests. There was a lot of hoopla at the time about the Texas miracle because these kids were doing sensationally on these Texas-made tests. However, when the kids took a non-Texas test, it turned out that their learning went down the tube. That was, of course, completely ignored under Bush and unfortunately continues, not only No Child, what remains of No Child Left Behind, but also in Race to the Top and Common Core Standards. Now, with respect to the issue that I said I wanted to address, the chief problem with the model of literacy is that it assumes that kids learn in a stepwise manner. That is, they learn first phonological awareness, sounds, then they learn phonics, then they become fluent in this, and it goes up and up till finally they become competent in comprehension. It's a model that, of course, lends itself to standardized testing because presumably you can measure and test these little pieces of stepwise information. There has never been any evidence to document the validity of that model. I wrote an entire book on it called Reading the Naked Truth, which goes into the entire body of research on that model. Because standardized testing reinforces that model, it prevents teachers from being able to teach and students be able to learn in authentic ways of literacy development. Children, of course, some children can learn and do learn in that stepwise manner. Others learn through an emphasis on meaning in which skills are orchestrated within it. I won't go through all of the permutations of how children learn to read, but in a nutshell, unless there's an end to standardized testing, then it will be impossible for children to develop their literacy abilities in ways that play upon their strengths and in ways in which teachers can not only reinforce their strengths but then see the areas in which they need additional encouragement and work on that, and teachers can individualize in a way that's impossible under standardized testing, the paths to learning. So the proof of all of this, of course, as some speakers have said before, is in the National Assessment of Educational Progress, which shows a flat learning rate since standardized testing and standardized literacy instruction has been developed. In fact, in 1990s, there was a trajectory upward before this was accounted for. I hear the beeping, I need to stop. So I would just conclude by saying that unless, that I applaud the resolution, because without the elimination of that, then another generation of students are going to be doomed to literacy failure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coles. Ms. Canaan? And then our last speaker on the topic will be Mr. Mark Friedman. Is he here?
Good evening. I'm a member of the Community Education Task Force. I speak in support of the petition presented to Commissioner Adams here tonight. Why do we feel it is important to pursue such actions? The petition relates the importance for accountability of elected officials to be responsive to both ideas they have put forth during their campaign and to addressing concerns raised by all constituents. CETF, as well as the community at large, comprise that constituency. We saw Commissioner Adams as a person of intelligence and insight regarding some of the most important issues facing the Rochester City School District. As part of the CETF, she worked to develop the key principles on which we operate. In addition, she took a leadership position by indicating during her campaign that she saw the need for the district to actively develop a working vision for the future with specifics and outlining possible plans and solutions. As she indicated, the district needed such a vision to respect the needs of both students and their families. She was right to do so. So what happened when we requested that she meet with us to engage in a dialogue based on what thought she had developed about the needed future plan? She strongly declined to meet. There was no reason given. It may appear to others that we are, that our actions are a tack on Commissioner Adams, but we feel a special need to seek a higher level of accountability for the mere fact that we carry a greater degree of responsibility due to the fact that we supported Commissioner Adams and urge the voting community to do the same. How can we expect less accountability from her now? Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Friedman, is he here? All right, Mark's here. After Mr. Friedman, so I won't keep folks here all night. We have four other speakers. So after Mr. Friedman, we'll go to Artisha Ingram.
All right, my name's Mark Friedman. I'm a staff member in the Rochester City School District and a member of the Community Education Task Force. My colleagues, Mr. Eagle, Mr. Adams, and Ms. Canaan, just before me, laid out this history of where this petition that came from, that I'm hoping the clerk can hand out to all of us, as we said, and I'm hoping that also can be read into the public record. This afternoon, while looking at the signatures, that just about eight days, there was one hundred and twenty-nine, did a little data analysis, I guess you could call it, but eighty-seven of those signatures, just over two-thirds, were from Rochester. And I made a special point for folks from other places, reaching out for people that did sign, to see, do you know anything about this history? Do you know anything about these issues? And in fact, a vast majority of those that were from other places knew, especially those from Chicago, that, including Chicago Teachers Union President Karen Lewis and others from their leadership, knew pretty intimately this history and were equally disappointed as we did that, you know, that this call for a meeting and for open conversation about this topic would not be responded to, that it was responded to in the way that it was in terms of saying, "No meeting, no way, no CETF." So we opened this up, and we decided that this needs to be something that we need to have a dialogue with the whole board on, not just Mary Adams. And I can't stress how important this is to have this dialogue and for us to all be there in terms of parents and community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Artisha here? And Artisha will be followed by Carrie Coleman. Is Carrie Coleman here?
Hi, my name is Artisha Ingram. I'm a student of Wilson commencement. I have recognized, everybody notices us as students, but no one has stopped to notice us as a person. What, we walk into school, I come to school every day, sit down, do my work. I don't come and cursing. I don't come and fighting. I don't walk around saying, "End this, F that." But my grades are not where they was when I was in elementary, seventh, eighth grade. I was an eighth-grade honor student. I was taking ninth and tenth-grade classes my eighth-grade year. Standardized testing came, my grades dropped to the point where I threatened to drop out of school three times this year. And I guarantee you it's going to come around next year, because we walk into school, the first day of school, and "Got to prepare for Regents, got to prepare for Regents," nothing, flat out. Homework, one of my classes, I'm an eighth-grade student, taking APUS World. I am in eighth grade, reading fifty pages a night. I have a learning disability, I have ADHD, and I'm dyslexic. And I can't, I can't do that as quick as other students. One of my teachers this year, I stayed in her school both of my lunch periods, every day after school that she stayed, and I still felt her class. I guarantee you, I could go against all y'all. You could put me in any school, and I could have them on my side and not yours, because y'all don't look at what we're going through. Y'all cannot come down to our age, when y'all was growing up with cookies and ice cream. Now you got kids bringing guns and stuff into school. We don't worry about school anymore. When I walk into my classroom, I gotta worry about, oh, who got it? I guarantee you could put me in the classroom, and I could tell you who got a knife, who got a razor in their pocket. So when I'm in class, that's what I'm worrying about. I'm not worrying about no test. And I took, I took Global and Integrated Algebra four times. Summer school was my fifth time. I still have not passed that test. I need that test to graduate, and I'm willing to put money on it that I will not pass them test next year. And that itself is giving me less encouragement to even go back to school this year. I done sat down with my grandma and told her, "I do not want to go back to school at all, because I know I'm not going to pass them tests." And I don't feel like what the needs I have, I don't feel like there's nothing out there that's helping them needs. I have a cousin who is eighteen, still in the tenth grade, because he cannot pass his Regents test. And then on top of that, the whole, you like the uniform policies, and then the teachers pushing us, saying, "This is how they want you to do it." I had a teacher, I don't even give my teacher, I told her, her answers to what she gave us was wrong. She went and got another teacher and said she's right. She kicked me out of class because I was right and she was wrong. How do you kick me out of class because I'm telling you and you feel like I'm trying to teach your class? I'm telling you, your answer was wrong. Other teachers telling you, your answer is wrong. And then I have teachers who teaching us the district's way of learning. When they say they self, that's not how it should be taught, that's not the easiest way. So I have teachers showing me two and three different ways of learning, and it's all getting jumbled up in my head. I don't think y'all look at the, I went through from pre-K to my tenth-grade year before anybody knew that I needed special needs, because I sat myself down, I know what I need to do myself. I hit eleventh grade, and I'm like, what am I looking at? Why is they combining the alphabet with numbers? I don't think I'm going to use that. And it got to the point where I will not come to school. I started physically getting ill when I walk into school, throwing up, headaches, where I will get a real bad anxiety where I pull out of school. My grandma pulled me out of school the rest of this year, because I started getting real sick just from going in school, knowing that I could not concentrate or comprehend what other kids was learning. And one day, it took me maybe two or three weeks. I said, "I'm not going back, Mom, I'm not going back." She, what she couldn't, told me to go because she knew I was going to go to school and do anything in my power to get brought home, because the testing and the, you feel if you push us, that's going to make us want to do better. That's not, that's going to make us want to drop out. That, it just is. And you could put me in any room, any office, anywhere, and I'm going to have any student on my side, any of them. Because you don't, I don't feel as you, you look at it as your student. When I walk outside of my house, it's people on my corner shooting dice, they got guns, they don't care. When I, I can't go, I go home, my grandma has a heart. When I, I can't go, I go home, my grandma has a heart problem. I, my grandma raised almost all of her grandkids. I go home, I help her with my little brother and my little sister. I can't go home and go straight in no book. That's not, that's just not how it is at my home. And I don't think the schools look at what goes on outside of school. I had one of my principals tell me, I was going to be 16 and pregnant, 16 and pregnant, and that hurt me, because my mom had all her kids before she had 20. I refuse to be a statistic. I hope what elementary principal that pushed me and told me I was going to be more. And to this day, I still get turned to some of my teachers and they're still there for me. One of my teachers took time out of her weekend to come and get me and teach me how to be a woman, because I didn't have that at home. She bought me diaries, journals, she said, right now, at the end of every week, I'm going to go through it with you and you tell me what you need help with. It wasn't all school for her. I went through her class with As and Bs. It's not just about school, we need something other than just school. We can't come, we can't come to school and concentrate if we got to worry about stuff outside of school. Every student don't think like me. I don't know what's going on at their house. One of my best friends was raped every day by her cousin, and she just came to school and nobody didn't know why she talked. Nobody didn't know why she didn't do her work. Nobody bothered to ask her, none of our teachers asked her. I said, why you don't do your work? Why do you come to school? She was getting raped every day for three months, and nobody knew why she just stopped. I don't think the teachers look at what we go through outside of school, and then they wonder why we can't focus on what they want us to learn. I guarantee you, I'm not graduating June of 2013, maybe not August, because I can't comprehend certain tests that we need on our diploma to graduate. I can't. Algebra, I can't. I look at that and I don't know what I'm looking at. And Global, you give it to us in a form of A, B, C, and D. That's not how the world works. It's not. And it's just, and it's hard to be one person trying to speak about one thing. I know, because nobody wondered why we do stuff and get kicked out of school and suspended. Did anybody ever stop and think that we needed the attention and that was the only way we was getting it? Because elementary, I showed out, kicked out of school, suspended. I fought any and everybody. I fought one of my teachers in elementary. But when I grew up, I realized that wasn't it. That wasn't how I was going to get the attention I needed. The attention I needed was for people to say, oh, I'm proud of you. I told my grandma, if you told me you was proud of me, one day I brought home an A, after that, everything was okay. We don't have anybody say we proud of you, or you could do better. Just the small things. People look at us as a student, as we have to learn, 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 nothing else.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. I just want to say, if you can give your number, let's give her a round of applause, please. I think that, first off, we're going to prove you wrong, you are going to graduate on time, because just from you standing up here and the speech that you gave, you spoke as well as any of the adults that spoke before you and many of the people that come up to this podium. So, and it takes a lot to get up here and do that. But is your grandmother here with you?
No, she, my grandma is sick.
So you're here by yourself today?
I called, I said, ma, I'm calling them, because I don't approve of what they putting in the newspaper. I'm going down there.
Well, we appreciate you coming, and I want you to give, if Gladys Pedraza Burgos is here, if you can give Gladys, or either Willie Robinson, your phone number. I can tell you, the superintendent leaned over to me and asked, you know, what was her name again? Because we want to make sure that we follow up on the concerns that you say, because you are speaking for what many students in the district feel. So we appreciate you coming out here tonight, and I want you to follow up with Gladys. Gladys, if you can just raise your hand, if you can give Gladys your number, we appreciate you coming, and we want to prove you wrong. We want to see you graduate, and we're going to make sure we're going to do everything we can to get you there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. And Reverend Bell will be followed by Quavis. Was Quavis here, Quavis Walker?
I stand today on behalf of the United Church Ministries and some of the ministeria groups in Rochester, surrounding Rochester area. I want to talk about a couple of topics. I want to talk about a variety of things, but I'm only going to take two tonight, and that is my concern with staffing and my concern with truancy. A year and a half ago, I was approached by community members, parents, students, and even school board members, asking us to fight against meral control. In my opinion, it was a no-brainer, because City Hall had their plate full with crime, housing development, et cetera, and the Rochester City School District had their hands full with low graduation rates, high dropout rates, parent involvement, et cetera. So I figured each organization should stay in its own lane. So we fought, and the outcome was no meral control, and the board members kept their jobs. So I stand with a heavy heart, because I received so many phone calls about Rochester City School District staffing. The community is concerned about constant movement of staff, in particular, constant flow from City Hall. Movement makes one appear to be busy and on the scene of yielding better results, only to find out that our children are in the same predicament as they've been in years in the past. Constantly rearranging the deck of chairs on the Titanic simply means you are playing musical chairs with our children. And at some point in time, you will hit the iceberg. You know what that mean when you hit the iceberg? You go one way, and that's down. So I ask that you look closely at the pattern in which I am speaking about. In addition, truancy, we know, and we've heard on the news, that 3,000 or more students are absent each and every day in the Rochester City School District. If you go back and do your research, it's $17,000 to $20,000 per child a year, which means state aid is based on the attendance, and which means we are losing money consistently, simply because we are, I'm told, going in another direction. As I end, I strongly suggest, Commissioners, that you take a good look at two particular positions, because I believe in calling a spade a spade, and that's the Chief of Staff position and the Budget Director position. And that's because, woe unto me, Brother Van White, if I don't speak up for the people who put me in the position that I'm in. Strongly look at the two positions. The community fought to keep meral control from existing. Now we're bringing it not through the back door, but we're bringing it in the front door of Rochester City School District. And it appears that the board is rubber-stamping what it is. So I pose this question as I sit down. Are you supported based on politics? Because anyone who knows anything about politics and principles, that just don't mix. See, I have principles, because at the end of the day, my integrity is going to speak up for me, more than the politics are. Lastly, our community, children, parents, and everyone else deserve better consistency. And we know that if you continue, if we continue to play politics as usual, our kids will continue to fail. So I ask that you take a stand tonight against meral control. You know what I'm talking about. Let's call it the way it really is. Take a stand against it. Take a stand against truancy, because the only way our children are going to learn, we're talking about standardized tests, we're talking about higher graduation rates, but you got to get them to school. And when you get them to school, you got to keep them in school. Politics are temporary, yet your name and integrity is all you have. So if you cross truth, I'll leave this with you. If you cross truth, eventually, truth will rise. Thank you.
Thank you. Quavis Walker here? Joan Uvino? Did I say your last name right? How do you say it? Uvino. Ms. Uvino.
I wrote something up, and I'm just going to give you all a copy, because I know it goes over two minutes. So I made copies for everybody. Copies to people that aren't here. I'm really addressing issues about mandates and school safety. I'm a Family Consumer Science teacher. I know, Mr. Vargas, you've been in my school. I do the Peace Project and teach kids basically interpersonal skills, which is one of our curriculums, is how to be nice to each other, compliments, thank yous. It goes over really well with the kids. It broke my heart. So I'm here because I know I read that community members in the Board of Education says we should treat kids like they're our own kids. And yet, there's been a practice in the city that they let non-certified teachers teach home and career classes. Okay? And then they're not even teaching home and career classes at all in some of the schools. And the non-certified teachers are teaching the class as a cooking class, and it's not. We have content area, we have a curriculum. Cooking is a very small part of that. And there's also signs in every room above the stoves, that do have stoves, that they're not supposed to use grease or greased-laid materials, and they do, because they're not certified and they're not trained. You have serious student issues. And you need to address the safety issues in those classrooms of non-certified people. It's hard enough to teach with 24 kids when you're certified and trained to do so, to have non-certified teachers teaching with kids that could get hurt or burned or injured in other ways. Not only is it liability, but more importantly, the kid's safety. And there have been articles in the news constantly about E. coli and food poisoning and recalls, and you have people who are not certified or trained in sanitation cooking with children and utilizing food with children. I know you follow the Health Department's codes about not bringing in perishable foods or foods baked at home, and yet you have, and even in classrooms. Teachers bring in burners and cook with kids in classrooms, because the kids tell me. Kids will tell you a lot of stuff if they like you. And they're making food in classrooms and there's no refrigerators. Where's the sanitation in that? Okay? We don't want our kids to get food poisoning. It can be deadly. E. coli doubles every 20 minutes. And it is toxic, it can kill you. I had started a PowerPoint presentation about what home and careers is, because we have a great curriculum. Like I said, Mr. Vargas has been in my school. I know Mr. Noms here, he's been in my school, where I do peace projects with the kids. The one of the 10 content areas, our topic areas, is interpersonal relationships, nutrition and wellness. We have childhood BCD rates. We have kids who, they don't eat right, and they don't know. A lot of people, adults, don't understand nutrition. I've done adult, teacher presentations on nutrition. There are, I started with a group of over 20. There are two full-time positions in the entire district. I do not know if I have a job in two weeks. I am number five on the totem pole. If I do have a job, it is not in one building, it is itinerant. You're having a hard time keeping highly qualified teachers when you're moving us two and three buildings, and we're running around and trying to do the best job for kids, and we can't be there for kids after school or before school, because we're in a different building. And I have listed a whole bunch of suggestions, obviously, I don't know the big picture, I'm a teacher, that, you know, if you have a concern, have a suggestion, I've listed suggestions that you might consider. You know, I don't, what could be done to retain highly qualified teachers, to keep our kids safe. If they were your kids, would you demand their highly qualified teachers and their safety?
Thank you.
I know I certainly would.
Thank you very much.
So, read what I wrote.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming. That concludes our speakers for this evening. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. Do you have a report today, Superintendent?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yep. So, you have five minutes?
Yep, five minutes, and after you, I'm going to do a quick shift of the agenda and move up discussion on Commissioner Adams's resolution.
Thank you.
We are working very aggressively with the community. We met today, President Evans, we, member of the faith community, asking them to help the district. We, this whole issue of attendance, sending the message to our families that we need to get the kid to school, encourage them to read to their children, and work in collaboration with us through Parent Connect and all the support that we can provide to them, at least they were of high interest. And to this day, this one church, they have volunteered to get a computer from the district, and we will go and train the parents that attend our church into how to monitor their children, report card, and attendance. And there was a high interest for that, so I hope that it will yield some result. A meeting tomorrow, we, every social service agents in this community have been invited to come in, and we are making simple, but no simplistic requests to, about how we can go about in creating a culture, not just in the district, but also in the community, that we support our school, we support our children, and that they are small step that each young of us can take to achieve that. Far as the opening of the school is concerned, I have, today I went to Northeast College Prep, and there were over 200 people there in terms of their orientation, every single school having asked by central office to do an orientation. There's a list available of when those activities are. I would encourage you to please attend those schools that you are liaison to it. Look around, don't be surprised by me when I tell you what's going on in our school. I think that people are telling you that a lot is going on in our schools, so I urge you to please come to our school on a regular basis and get as much feedback as you can and pass it on to me, and we will do the best we can to address. The opening of the school is an opportunity for our teachers and principals to set the stage for a good school year, particularly, there's so many changes around the common core. The curriculum in this district is something that we are tending to it, K-12, and hopefully, and there's a lot of issue around the support, social-emotional support, as you heard one of our students tonight. We also are beginning to work with foundation and other group, because we cannot do it alone, and that's where I wholeheartedly believe, and it's one of our goal, to have at least 20% of our students next year to receive expanded learning for social-emotional support, and yes, academic support, and to play more sport, art, music. You will hear me about a month from now, talking about the budget, and one who believes that we should do everything we can, and you will never see a budget with me, from me, that caught our art, music, or sport. Our children today have less opportunity than they had in the early 2000 or 1990 to play sport, to be part of art or a play, and that had to change, we need to correct that if we are going to make headway. Also, as you heard from some of our young people, they are hurting, and they need support. And part of that support is that we can no longer afford to do business on six and a half hours a day. As I was listening and talking to some parents and students and staff at the Northwest College, Northeast College Prep, they are very encouraged, because they believe that with additional time, they can provide our children with the academic, social, emotional, and physical support that they need, and yet more enrichment opportunity. And as the, as you know, we also are getting tremendous support from Wegmans and other group in order for us to be able to do that. For us truancy is concerned, we've been meeting with members of the community, and we are going at this problem differently. Kindergarten, as you know, the children that had the most, has a very, very difficult time coming to school on a regular basis. And so our truancy approach would be at a very early age. We want to work with family from kindergarten, first grade, second and third grade, and we are going to target them. And as you know, now it is the law, that if you're in kindergarten, you have to come to school, and we are going to give the families and work with the community to give them the support that they need, because we do know that if we fail to help them in our early age, it's very difficult later on, particularly for truancy. It doesn't mean that we won't continue to pay attention to attendance. I invite any- I invite any members of this community, now it's public, weekly, we can give you our attendance rate, and it would be, it's something that we'd be sending to you weekly, because we have to submit this to the state of New York, our daily attendance. We are ready. I've been fortunate, where Anita Murphy and now Patty and others are going to be helping me, and the problem that we had with that is over. We have solved it. We are going to monitor. If it breaks, if it breaks during the week, we will fix it. If we cannot tell you how many children that come to school on a daily basis, we have a serious problem. We also, you heard from me, that we are going to have an early warning system for this board, and for us to monitor that. Anything that concern monitoring students, we are going to make sure that we have it in place, and that we are going to be transparent. If we have a problem, you will know immediately, you will know a year or two later. I even have invited members of the press to monitor this, to work with us, because we can no longer continue to take a chance in the promise that I'm making to you or anyone else. Sophie is here, but through her advice and the advice of all the students, I have created a superintendent student advisory group, that I encouraging every school to send children to talk with us, and I've been meeting with them on a regular basis, something that I did last, since I've been here. But I will continue to work to listen to the student voice. The more, the more I listen to them, the more I know that we have a lot of work to do, and they're very articulate and can express what they need, and the challenges in us as an adult to meet their needs. August graduation is tomorrow, so I urge you to please attend, to the extent that is possible. I know that you do have a very busy schedule. You also will be getting more information about the changing that we are making for the I Am Ready programs, which you have talked to me and members of the board are concerned about, that programs that we're making some adjustment. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
A question.
Questions for the superintendent?
Yeah, regarding the truancy initiative, a couple months ago, there was a report saying, from the mayor, saying that the program is being kept under wraps. And I've been requesting the protocol or the procedures that describe exactly how the district will be implementing the new truancy policy, and in particular, I've expressed concerns about extensive use of child protective services and over, you know, an overly punitive approach. And I think it's really important that the protocol in writing be put out before the public, so that interactions can be made and, you know, invitations can be made for less institutional approaches to fighting truancy, so that we can truly tap our resources in our neighborhoods, in our churches, and so on. So, when can we expect a protocol to be in writing?
Well, I finalize and that, Ms. Murphy, we make that available to you, the person that is working with us in that regard, because we collecting the best available practice and research in this regard, but it will be by early next week. We hope to have that in place, and we will make it available to you and to the board and to the community as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent? All right, thank you. You went a little over five minutes, but that's okay.
Next, I'm going to take 20 when we talk about the budget.
Yeah, well, that's going to be some extra time. Let me just, most of the folks that spoke to the resolution regarding the Commissioner Adams' resolution have left, Commissioner Adams, I'm going to move that up to the agenda. You just want to touch on it a little bit about your resolution, if you want to highlight some points, and I think, is this going to the ESA Committee?
It's actually gone through ESA Committee and is here for discussion with a request to advance it for voting at the next.
Next meeting, okay.
Yeah, I'm new to advancing resolutions, so I believe that that's the correct language to request that it be advanced for voting next meeting. I just want to point out, I believe that there were experts who spoke extensively and made the case for the rationale for calling on this, but just to clarify, this is a national model resolution calling on state level and federal government, especially state level government agencies responsible for education policy to back off of the emphasis and overwhelming impact of high-stakes testing within our schools and teaching. The rationale, again, as I said, others have stated more eloquently and more knowledgeably than I can. I want to point out who the authors of this national model legislation are, because I think that's relevant. It was authored by collectively the Advancement Project, Asian American Legal Defense and Education Fund, Fair Test Forum for Education and Democracy, Mecklenburg ACTS, Deborah Meyer, who's a prominent educator, who's demonstrated success in Boston Public Schools, NAACP Legal Defense and Education Fund Incorporated, National Education Association, New York Performance Standards Consortium, Tracy Novick, Parents Across America, Parents United for Responsible Education, Chicago, Diane Ravitch, Race to Nowhere, Time Out from Testing, and United Church of Christ Justice and Witness Ministries. So, those are the authors of the model legislation, which has been basically adopted as a local resolution, which I hope my colleagues will support.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. And to your point, I know that you mentioned that some of our colleague districts in the Council of Great City Schools I know have had similar resolutions. Any other comments around the resolution that we'll be voting on next meeting, Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Adams, for a couple of things. First and foremost, for bringing the resolution, and for taking the heat that you did just now. I don't know if I could, my vibes were able to reach the other end of the dais when you were being singled out, but I wanted to just get up and sit with you in solidarity. You did what, in all my years of being on the board and being sympathetic to the consortium of schools and the anti-testing movement. You have done what I've wanted to do, and we all need to take on our battles, yes? We all need to do what moves us most to do, and notwithstanding my sympathies, that wasn't one of the things that I picked up to do, and I just want to congratulate you for doing it, and for bringing such esteemed speakers, or inviting, or whatever outreach you did, because what we heard in their comments was very demonstrative of the wide array of inputs we have to this issue, and the lack of, and the lack of proof that it works. And so, thank you for bringing it. Also, thank you for explaining that this is essentially boilerplate, because I would have, I was going to ask if we couldn't elucidate more on the whole consortium aspect and alternative paths and seek, you know, get some language specific to waivers for non-traditional schools. But if this is boilerplate, then I'm thinking this is a place to start, not the endpoint, but the first step, and would support it as written on that basis. You know, there were so many important things that were said by very esteemed individuals, and it's too bad they're all gone. Every last one of them is gone. But I do see some pencil partners, so I'm going to speak to the two pencil partners we have and say that Mr. Coles had a very interesting thing to say about the way children learn to read. And as the mother of a young boy going into the third grade, I can tell you, and only because I had other children before him and watched their development, absolutely not an educator, never aspired to be one. It's not the role I play here on the board, to second-guess educators. But I can tell you that as he reads to me at bedtime, because that's where we're at, he should be reading to me, I noticed some interesting things about how he views what he's reading. First of all, if he sees the word "the," "the" is not what comes out. It might be "a," "an," "one," any article at all, because he recognizes it's an article. Then, if he comes across a word that he doesn't know, he puts together combination of the phonics that he recognizes, the letters, and the shapes of the letters, with what words he already knows from the spoken vocabulary, to try to fill in the blank. And so, I recognize immediately that he's exercising critical thinking. He's trying to piece things together. So, I point to our pencil partners and ask you to spread the word, get the kids to read to you. At some point, having adults read to the kids isn't nearly as important as getting them to read to you and show, and getting them to show us what they already know, because they can show us an awful lot. I mean, the things that my eight-year-old has been able to show me about what he knows based on hearing him read to me, and try to sort through the gaps in his literacy, has just been astounding. And as I said, all the speakers had really powerful things to say, especially when you piece, when you knit them together, when you knit them together with what our student had to say. And I wrote it down, because it's so powerful. "The U.S. history exam lays out, is laid out in A, B, C, or D. The world isn't laid out that way," she said. And my God, it is so true. In fact, the tests will tell you, choose the answer that is closest, right? Usually, these kind of tests, they say, choose the answer that is most right. Gets you right to the heart of the fact that none of them capture the whole truth, do And yet, we ignore that intelligence that our kids have to know to survive in streets where they are, where there's dice played in the alleys and drugs and violence. It takes a specific kind of intelligence to navigate a world with those things present. And you know what? My kids don't need to know it, because I've managed to shelter them from it. But the rest of the district, by and large, has to deal with it every single day. And those who talked about, I think Santoshia was the one that said, can our tests tell us that a child is dealing with trauma, or that their incarcerated father can't read to them? I mean, take all the things you heard and knit them together, and every one of us should be up until well past midnight trying to make sense of that. And I attribute those conversations to Mary taking this first step, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. We'll move back to standing committee reports. Commissioner White, and we'll start with the ESA Committee.
Yeah, I have a rather lengthy report, but I'm not going to read it all, Mr. President. It's dated August 23rd, 2012, and it summarizes our meeting on August 13th. We had an extensive conversation about the Northeast College Prep's extended day initiative that includes Wegman's initiative. We are very blessed, very fortunate to have them. If you direct your attention to page one of my report, you'll see all the good things that are happening there, and we are, at least those members of us on the committee were very encouraged by what we saw. We also, I should tell you, part of Superintendent Vargas and Wegmans and all those good folks that are working over there, effort is to have extended day and to have Saturdays. That's part of the longer learning program there. Students will have opportunities to participate in academic enrichment, literacy and numeracy support, credit retrieval, SAT prep, employment opportunities, and sports. Sounds like the kind of school I need to go to when I was in high school. So, we thank the administration for that effort, and we expect and are very, very encouraged by the developments that will continue to occur there. Additionally, we talked about Commissioner Adams' standardized testing resolution. Commissioner Powell probably summarized all those things that I would say about Commissioner Adams' resolution. It points out why we didn't need mayoral control, we just needed a democratic process that puts good people on the board, and Mary is just one of those latest folks. And I often have said that, you know, this institution works best, this board works best as if we were an eight-cylinder engine and all, actually, seven cylinders. All seven cylinders are working independently and aggressively, in their own, sometimes independent way, but in a collaborative way to make the engine turn and make the vehicle go forward. So, Mary is obviously an integral and effective part of the team. And then finally, Mr. President, we also talked about the school closing resolution, and we were blessed to have Beverly, I think Beverly was there, and, or I certainly had a commitment from the administration to examine the resolution that I had presented a couple few weeks before, that will allow this administration and administrations going forward to have a disciplined plan when we're closing down schools. It was fortunate, I was at a Northeast Zone Improvement Team meeting with Sean and his team. One of them was a volunteer, Malik?
Oh, yeah, Brenda Farrell.
Brenda Farrell? Sean, I didn't even know she was a volunteer, regrettably. She seems like a very dynamic teacher. She's not, like so many people, not able to get in this district and is now looking for a job elsewhere in Leroy. What a shame.
Yeah, she got the job there.
But in any event, she was there along with Sean, and they had this, who was the other person, Sean? I don't want to leave anybody out.
Ella Perry.
And then we have a parent rep, and I'm sorry, ma'am, what's your name? I'm terrible.
April Dixon.
April Dixon. We had a very good meeting, and the reason why I'm bringing that up, Mr. President, is during that meeting, someone had suggested, as part of their review, it was a great team meeting, because we went through all the different things that were going on in the different elementary and secondary schools in the Northeast, and during the course of that examination, the subject of closing schools came up, and how traumatizing it can be to the affected school, and we all know this. And somebody had said, or suggested, I can't remember who it was, Sean, they said, you ought to have like a closer. Now, not like the closer that this district has had in some instances, where this person is known to come in and close down schools. But we know, and the superintendent has repeatedly reminded us, incorrectly so, that there are going to be schools that are just going to have to close. But who is put in charge of managing? Who's the leader who manages that closing? And someone suggested, and I'm going to suggest it be made part of that resolution that I presented, that that person has some expertise in morally and spiritually giving that school that's closing what it needs to make it through that transition. We have not traditionally done that, you know, as Sean had suggested, celebrating the holidays, encouraging people, because these school environments are often demoralized. So, somehow, we're going to figure out a way to put that into the resolution, that this superintendent and future superintendents cannot just put somebody in there who's going to coldly, coolly flash and burn and shut the place down, but really uplift people as they make it through a very difficult process. And then, just a point of personal privilege, also during that meeting, if you guys don't go to your Zone Improvement Team meetings, you really need to go, because I learned so much, and there are a lot of great ideas there. And one of the ideas was, we need to, Mr. President, uplift our teachers that are doing a good job, show the ones that are role models. And I said, hey, you know, next Tuesday, maybe not this Tuesday, but the following Tuesday, we are going to, Sean's going to identify from the Northeast Zone, I can't help you all if you're not in the Northeast Zone. Uh-huh. And, I'm sorry, don't be hating, but the next Tuesday on WDKX, with Sean's help and the superintendent's help, we're going to identify just one of many, many, many good teachers in this district, and we're going to hold that person up, and we're going to talk about them on DKX, because this district has many good teachers, and we just don't give kudos to them. And sometimes, if they're secreted in one school, other teachers in another building, Mr. President, they don't see them. So, we're going to lift these teachers up to see what good teaching takes place in Rochester. So, thank you, Sean. I know that wasn't supposed to be part of my report, Mr. President.
That's all right, personal privilege.
Thank you, Sean, for insisting that I come to that meeting. It was a very good meeting. I learned a lot, as always. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell in finance?
Yes, thank you. Our finance committee was last Thursday, August 16th, and we did not have financial reports to review, because this is the time when we're trying to close the books on the previous year, and we wouldn't have audited information in the
previous year and we wouldn't have audited information in the first instance. But we did discuss a number of important things, including resolutions 77 through The first two, procurement and supply, one food services for the summer and, I'm sorry, it's not for the summer. Then it's the, and then resolutions 80 through 100 were facilities. We specifically discussed some late resolutions. Day automation is our energy management survey. Helps us make sure that we're keeping our energy bills just as low as possible. And the other was RTS contract for this next year. It is 3.4% higher than the previous year, but it includes services to two additional charter schools, transportation for all of the students at Charlotte to their swing space, and it includes extended day services to the All-City High School and the Northeast College Prep. So these are additional services that we're getting for, you know, essentially additional cost, but very manageable increase all in all. We also received a schedule for the process for the Contract for Excellence. We have to have, we have to submit reports to the state. We have to have public hearings, none of which seem to be anything more than an exercise in futility because we're not getting additional dollars for it, but it's, nevertheless, it's what's required by the state and so we have a plan to go forward. Our next meeting is September 13th, 5:30 PM. That's the Thursday before our board meeting. The only thing I would add to this report that wasn't discussed during the meeting but is an ongoing concern that I hope to take up is the emergence of resolutions after the deadlines, after the packets have been completed.
We're trying to put a clamp down on that.
Well, exactly.
And I have, I have told the clerk, and the clerk has told me, and she has told the administration, that that deadline really needs to be dropped dead deadline. Otherwise, it kind of throws board in resolve.
And we, with a new CFO, we have an opportunity to sort of reinforce those standards. So we'll see how that goes. That does conclude my report of the finance committee. Just for your information, there is a meeting of the New York State School Board Association, September 8th is a Saturday. If there are issues you'd like to take up, I'll be there in Albany on September 8th.
Thank you. Commissioner Adams and the Audit Committee.
The Audit Committee did not meet in July. The Audit Committee does not meet on a monthly basis. The prior meeting from the Audit Committee generated our risk assessments, which are being worked on diligently. I would like to take a point of personal privilege.
A point of personal privilege? Yes, ma'am.
I, you know, I regret, I'm hesitant, and I regret even taking the time to address the petition that was directed against me, but I feel that it's critically important that people who are not aware of the circumstances behind this are aware that I am deeply committed to making any public appearance that is requested of me to discuss issues of the district. I have service on the board and I have really, it's very disturbing, the dishonest character. So I'm just, I'm going to read a written statement very quickly because I don't want to take too much time from the clearly deep business that needs to be done with this board. "I encourage any sincere activist group in utilizing petitions and other means to voice varying opinions. However, the CETF petition is deceitful. I will continue to do what I've been doing since I started serving on the board. I have, in fact, met publicly, both by invitation from community organizations and in meetings I have called for and organized for stakeholder input multiple times since I started serving in January. There have been public hearings and informational sessions that would not have taken place if I had not insisted on obtaining community input. I've met frequently with large numbers of students, parents, teachers, administrators, community volunteers, and neighborhood associations. This is what I do. This actually defines the character of my service. In short, I believe anyone who is objectively evaluating my service thus far would agree that my service is defined by a commitment to public transparency, deep and ongoing engagement, and a willingness to reach out beyond the normal confines of board responsibilities. The charges of CETF's petition could not be further from the truth. The petition reflects a highly personal anger at my solid refusal to meet with Mr. Eagle and what he calls the CETF leadership team based on his bullying, and I do not use that phrase lightly, his bullying and dishonest behavior toward me, plain and simple. I hold no bad feelings toward the signers of this petition. I have expressed my understanding to people who have approached me in confusion or who have signed it based on misinformation. I will not engage in back and forth. The last thing that this community needs is more public displays of arguments between and among people who say they believe the same things and are committed to the same principles." Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Thank you so much. Again, I just want to give my condolences to Michelle Klinzke and her family. We lost another student, Max King, 15-year-old student. And it was very interesting that our student talked about some of the challenges that we have outside the community, the externalities, the things that happen outside of the school walls and during the summer is enough to give everyone on the board and all of us in the district goosebumps because of the levels of violence that we see in our community. And there's a great article, I believe it's in the Wall Street Journal today, it's almost scary that it's in today when we just had this young murder. And it's basically titled Grim Cycle. And I would urge every teacher, every person in the district to read this article. I'm not a, I read a lot of different newspapers. Wall Street Journal isn't one that I read regularly. But it's Grim Cycle and it's called Black Men Killing Black Men. And one of the things from that article is something for all of us to think about in this community is overall, it's stated that overall, more than half of the nation's homicides are African-American, though blacks make up 13% of the population. Of those murder victims just this past year, 85% of them were men and they were mostly young men. So there's some work that needs to be done, not just in Rochester, but across our communities to stop this crazy cycle. Any of us that have sons couldn't even imagine someone being 15 years old and being cut down at the, in their prime. To me, it still just mystifies me as I was sitting here throughout this whole, this whole day. So our thoughts go out to Max King and the Klinzke family on this senseless tragedy that happened before school starts. School starts Wednesday, September 5th. I know the superintendent has been working hard to make that happen. I want to encourage our students and community to get excited about the start, the start of school. As you saw, the board gave a check today for the book bags to get that kicked off. And I also want to mention the Parent Advisory Committee. I don't see, is Candace here today? Candace Lucas? She's not here today, but the Parent Advisory Committee, where we convene in September, and we anticipate a meeting with the committee on a quarterly basis. I think we're going to try to meet with them sometime in November to hear, get feedback on how the school year is going so far. And their meetings are as follows. They're meeting September 10th, October 15th, November 19th, December 10th, January 14th, February 11th, March 11th, April 15th, May 13th, and June 10th. And you know, Commissioner White made an excellent point earlier when he said, when seven board members are working, you know, in the vineyards and firing at all cylinders, good things happen. And as a result of the board being serious about parent input, we actually have a report every meeting from our parent rep. At the same time, we give the board reports and the board meets with the parent, meets with the Parent Advisory Council on a quarterly basis and board members sometimes even meet more than that if they go, but formally, we meet with them on a quarterly basis. So that concludes my report. We're going to go into resolutions. We're going to consider resolutions with the exception of 116 through 117 because we don't have the proper number of people to consider 116, 117, because I would have to abstain from that resolution. So that means we would only have three people considering it, which means we can't consider it. So we will consider that at another scheduled meeting. We may have something next week or, yeah, the earliest would be next week. I'm not sure.
September 6.
Or I think we are scheduled to meet September 6th, so it probably will be September 6th. So we will start with Human Capital Initiative resolutions. These are resolutions 51 through 76. And we discussed some of these resolutions in our study session, if you all remember. So I entertain a motion for resolutions 51 through 76.
So moved.
Seconded. It's moved and seconded. Any questions or discussions around 51 through 76? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Procurement and Supply, 77 through 78. We touched on these in our study session, but more importantly, they went through the Finance Committee. Commissioner Powell, if there's anything you want to add on 77 through 78 or anything?
Nothing there.
Nothing major. I entertain a motion to approve 77 through 78.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner White, seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Adams. And again, those resolutions are up on the screen, which is our board docs. All those in favor of 77 through 78, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Thank you. 79, very important one, which is food service. And before we vote on that resolution, I want to say, Commissioner Adams was in a leadership meeting with me and we learned something very heartening from food service. Guess what? Students are no longer going to have to fill out applications for food. And if, and I'm sure there are parents that were like parents when I was growing up. When I, when I used to bring home the food application, my mother and father would say, that's none of their business, we're not filling this out. And a lot of parents feel that way. And as a result, students who may have been eligible to get food may not, may not have gotten it. And then we also had this system where if a kid forgot to pay their balance, they would get, what do we call it? Was it a sun butter sandwiches?
Sun butter, yeah.
Sandwiches. But now that's gone because there's, this is actually something good that has happened. And I think it's important to highlight that if a district has a certain level of poverty level, everybody is eligible to get lunch. So that's very heartening for us in this district. Commissioner Adams?
But just quick clarification, is it really true that students do not have to fill out any paperwork? Or is it true that we still have to do paperwork, but everyone will get lunch regardless of status? Just quick clarification.
Yeah.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner Adams. We will still have to do eligibility documentation. The program's called the Community Eligibility Option, and the reason we're going to have to do that is to prove to the SED that we are still.
Eligible.
Exactly. But however.
But everyone will be able to eat. That's the key point.
Absolutely.
And I think that's the important distinction. No one will go without. Commissioner White and then Commissioner Powell.
Jerome, Mr. Underwood, that was verification district-wide. No parent has to fill out any more forms, right?
They do. They're not, they're not.
That's a question.
We will have to get eligibility, family eligibility.
So parents still have to fill out forms?
SED was going to advise us how, on the how, but eligibility will still have to be determined.
So if a kid doesn't fill it out, though, they still got to eat, right?
Yes.
But they still, they'll still get their food?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So. Well, the only other thing I was going to say is, Mr. Underwood has a very difficult job and he's, but let me tell you something. At that finance meeting, he was smiling all day.
He was happy, yes.
This is a wonderful development and I know he took a lot of effort in making this happen, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I know he is a public servant. You can really see the gratitude because he was pleased with the outcome, that our kids and our administration won't have to work as hard to make sure our kids have the food and nutrition that they need. So thank you, Mr. Underwood.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner Powell?
Yeah, the only thing I would add to the conversation, although, will be the lucky recipients that doesn't have to pay a bill every now and again. The thing is, that third grader still isn't going to eat unless we provide him something that looks familiar and looks desirable and looks edible. So far, we still have our work cut out for us, Jerome.
Yeah. Well, but let me say, I think things have gotten better. I remember a time when we had board meetings and people were in buttons and coming here and talking about.
They brought the food here.
They weren't going to eat this food. And we had people giving us food that was green and brown and black. And I remember going to Ann's school, I think it was, and the orange juice was like frozen rock solid. It was like popsicles. So I, you don't hear as many complaints and that's progress. So, and again, I think Mr. Underwood deserves a mighty lion's share of the credit for that.
Thank you. And even though I violated protocol a little bit, now I entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 79.
So moved.
Moved, seconded.
Sure.
Seconded, properly moved and seconded. All those in favor of Resolution 79, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Thank you. 80 through 100 also went through, also went through the Finance Committee. These are educational facilities. And I always say, the fancy way, the, most of it is related to the upkeep of our building. A lot of it is the gut stuff, stuff that you don't see, like electricity and plumbing and those sorts of things. Commissioner Powell, if there's anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, at this stage in the cycle, almost all of them are architects preparing the groundwork for next summer's work. It's just the stage we're in in the cycle.
Yes, thank you. I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 80 through 100.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. And then lastly, under other, with the exception of 116 and 117, I entertain a motion, what was that?
Hillside is Number 12.
Oh, 110, I'm sorry. 110, 116, and 117. I'll entertain a motion for 101 through 135.
So moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Questions or discussions under the resolutions? Hearing none, all those in favor of 101 through 135, with the exception of 110, 116, and 117, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Thank you. We don't have any unfinished business from the previous meeting. We already talked about the proposed resolution for discussion of the standardized testing and assessment. The only thing I would add is that I plan on supporting this resolution, particularly because this is something that large urban districts are dealing with across the country, districts of our size. If you look at the Council of Great City Schools, which we're a member of, I can't remember off the top of my head, Commissioner Adams, what districts have already approved this resolution, but with San Francisco, one of them, I can't remember, there's a couple of them that have.
There's a whole list on the website. I know Broward County in Florida.
Broward County, which is.
A number of districts in Florida and Texas.
Right, so a lot of our sister districts that are members of the Council of Great City Schools have, have signed off on this, on this resolution. We also have, just for discussion items, I know Commissioner White, Commissioner White, you have a resolution.
Yeah, just to my colleagues, you have two resolutions, two separate and distinct resolutions, which my goal merely today is to have the president refer them both to finance. The first one is what I would call a transparency resolution. Our colleagues and fellow public servants over at City Hall, as I understand it, have had this manner of doing business for quite some time. In other words, they call out specifically the salaries of their employees. We, as a district, for years, many, many years, have just lumped, you know, you look at a particular department, it'll say finance, and it'll say salaries in finance, or the board, it'll say salaries. And it doesn't tell people what specific salaries certain people are earning. And other municipalities do that. We should begin that trend because it is important that we be transparent fiduciary agents. I hope that after this particular resolution gets vetted and financed, that it comes back before this board and we find that my colleagues support that. I think it is long overdue and is not really a complicated resolution. The second resolution, Mr. President, my recommendation would be that it also go to finance for discussion. And that resolution is also a transparency resolution, but it is also a resolution that calls for this board to lead by example. A couple few weeks ago, the superintendent presented a series of recommendations respecting how we should alter the pay of some folks in SEG. And one of the reasons why he did that, and I think rightly so, was he made this argument that we ought to lead by example. Our vacation time, our salaries ought to be reflective of what we are expected to do as public servants. And so, in this particular resolution, Mr. President, I have laid out what certain high-ranking officials in the district make in this district and what they make in comparable districts, that is, in the Big Five. I also lay out in this particular resolution for my colleagues' consideration what high-level, high-ranking officials make in this current administration and what their immediate predecessors made. And the ultimate resolve section of that resolution suggests. And the ultimate resolve section of that resolution suggests, as part of a conversation, that we began actually many weeks ago, when the superintendent recommended that we lead by example, and look at and examine what we're paying our employees. This particular resolution calls for the board to consider putting into alignment the salaries of four officials within the administration. And if you look at the numbers, particularly with respect to the Deputy Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and the Deputy Superintendent for Administration Operation, the alignment that I'm suggesting is $5,000. They're currently salaried, and we will know what their salary, the community will know what their salary, because the resolution, the first resolution says, everybody's salary should be before the entire public. It shouldn't just be lumped together. And again, I hope we can all agree that that's a fair thing that we should do as public officials, let our citizens know what we're paying our employees. The second resolution admittedly is a bit tricky, and may require some conversation, and may require a little sacrifice, but that's what we did four weeks ago. We said, people need to make sacrifices. And so, at this point, I've put down, for example, that the deputy superintendents, instead of making 160, should make 155. And that's just a recommendation. That's a recommendation to have a conversation. And I think it's consistent, and it's in alignment with the conversation we had six weeks ago with our existing SEG employees, when we asked them to look at what they were making, we asked the board to look at what they were making, and then we said, let's lead by example. And people need to remember, this is a conversation. These resolutions begin conversations, dialogue, respectful, decent, honorable dialogue. This isn't an attack, this isn't on someone's judgment. People of reason and commitment can have different points of view, but I think we need to have a respectful, decent conversation about what we need to do as an administration, what we need to do as a school district, and every dollar should count. And as I've heard many people say, many people on this DSA, we need to cut as far away from the classroom as we can. And if it means, and you know, somebody said, well, hey, a second, why are you putting these people on Front Street? Well, we did that six weeks ago. We had a whole bunch of SEG employees that we said, hey, we're going to take you down from 30 to 20, from 25 to 20. We have conversations about the board before Superintendent Vargas got here, we had conversations about the board's salary, and what sacrifices we should make. This is not the first time we've had public employees, specific public employees, consider the renumeration, the compensation they receive. We've had this conversation six weeks ago, we had it about the board, we've had it about the superintendent. This is just consistent with that. And I certainly don't want anybody to think I'm trying to get at their wallet, I don't want anybody to think I'm attacking their personal privilege that resulted from some contract. What I want people to know is, we're all public servants, at one point or another, including current members of SEG, their own salaries, their own vacation times have been a part of that conversation. We should have that conversation, even with the new employees. So I ask that everyone, just indulge this community in a decent, respectful conversation about what kind of give and take we can expect from the newest members of our team. And let me just say, as a personal note, you know, and I probably will have many occasions to talk about the good work of the newest members of the team on many occasions, but I've already said, Anita, you are doing a wonderful job. And I said that because I saw something recently about All-City High, and, you know, I'm not going to lie, we, some of us were very frustrated. But you got in there, I don't think you've been here, what, two months, if that, a month? You got in there, got your hands dirty, and responded to our concerns, and then said, we look forward to working with you. And that was meaningful to me. So I want folks to understand that my recommendation here is not an attack on people, because the people that I've worked with thus far, Beverly, Anita, I have not had a chance yet to work with Bill or Patty, it's been a good ride so far. This is not about you personally, this is about the district. And sacrifices we all must make, sacrifices that your colleagues, other SEG employees have been asked to make. So thank you for your indulgence, and I look forward to the conversation.
Thank you. So ordered, I will send that resolution, we'll go over to the Finance Committee. We also have a couple of other policies that are before you, that are, they're really, as you know, we've been going through this, God, has it been two years now we've been revising our policy manual?
Yes.
We've been updating our, we've been, over a year and a half, we've been updating our policy manual, so we, if anyone wants to discuss it, the proposed revision of the media relations policy, we're revising that, evaluation policy, district community collaborative presentations, program and services, we have a policy for everything. The key is, we need to make sure we enforce them. So there's that policy. But I also saw something for the responsible bidder, too, but that's not, is that up for discussion, too?
That was for considerations in the resolution.
We voted already on that, so I wanted to call that out. We voted on the responsible bidder policy, and that was just passed here, so we want to thank my colleagues for voting for that tonight. We handled all of our speakers tonight, so we are done with all of our speakers. Our next business meeting will be September 27, 2012, but we probably will have a special meeting prior to that, because we will probably have some resolutions that we need to consider to get the school year off and running. Raise your hand if you're a staff member here. Raise your hand if you're district staff. I want to just thank you all for your hard work, and I also want to say to you, good luck with the start of school. I know that the work that, I don't think anyone has any clue about all the work that goes to opening a school. I mean, it's kind of scary. And I always, I know how I feel the night before school opens, it's almost like you get these butterflies in your stomachs, I know the superintendent, I know his little stomach is even in bigger knots than mine, with all that transportation, food service, schedules, I mean, Murphy's Law, I mean, you know, what can happen, happens sometimes at the worst possible time. So last year went off without a hitch, I'm hoping that this year goes off without a hitch. I know that the staff is working 24/7. I can remember, I saw study session, we left, I mean, we left the study session at 9:30, I still saw cars in the parking lot at, you know, almost 10 o'clock. So I know that the work is happening, Mr. Superintendent, just don't work the staff too hard.
No.
Yeah. So I thank you all for your work that you are doing to get us ready for the start of the school year. Thank you so much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved, seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye, we are adjourned, thank you.